Evening, everyone. Thank you for attending tonight, Tuesday, March fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-three. Our regularly scheduled Board of Selectmen, Board of Finance, Budget Workshop, Virtual Meeting. Thank you all for attending. I call our Board to order, and if someone wants to call the Board of Finance to order.
Yes, good evening, Mr. Chair Michael McCormick, and I will call the Board of Finance meeting to order. We have four members from the Board of Finance present.
Okay, perfect. I ask that we please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Our next section is our public comment section. We request that members wishing to briefly address the Board on the topics of tonight, please state their name and write it in the chat box. We ask that comments be limited to three minutes or less. I know we had had at least one person. Donna, can you assist this?
Yep, and I will be running a time clock. Lily Rhodes is our first public speaker.
Good evening. My name is Lily Rhodes, R-H-O-D-E-S, at one oh six Slocum Road here in Hebron. I want to speak to a conversation at your March seventh meeting in the context of budget deliberations, of course. Terry McMahon has questioned Hebron's longstanding commitment to open space land acquisition and the cost to the town of purchasing land. In his words, simply to prevent it from being developed. He also expressed an expectation that the acquisition of open space land necessitated or should require a formal land use and management plan. First, there is no shortage of land available in Hebron for development. The fractional percent of the town's budget that is gradually building a fund from which open space land can periodically be acquired is so fractional, with outsized benefits to residents and the town's economic viability. Surveys consistently show that residents value and want to maintain Hebron's rural character. My understanding is that each acquisition is carefully researched with criteria including water course and wetlands protection, migratory corridors, health benefits to the public, and local economic benefits. Participants in this deliberation, as I understand it, are Openspace Land Acquisition Committee, Inland Wetlands and Conservation, Planning and Zoning Commission, Planet Conservation and Development, providing some guidance, the Parks and Rec, there are probably others, I'm still learning. Hebron's land acquisitions are often collaborations with state resources, contributing significant logistical and financial support sometimes. Open space doesn't mean empty. Hebron's open spaces offer hiking, biking, fishing, birding, farming, dog walking, picnicking. Examples would be Burnt Hill Park or Raymond Brook Preserve and the corridors alongside the airline trail that are protected from development that would make it not such a natural place. There are benefits to residents, respecting their interest in retaining Hebron's rural character and also providing publicly accessible opportunities for recreation, education, and socializing. Benefits to local businesses that are providing visitors to our open spaces with snacks, coffee, meals, filling up their car with gas, a massage, bait for fishing, you know, all different kinds of things for retail operations. There's also the benefit to the town of a decreased burden on town services and costs and the environmental benefits of clean air, water, and an environment for wildlife. To reiterate, there's no shortage of land available for development in Hebron. I strongly encourage all of you to continue Hebron's commitment to open space land acquisition and to fully fund their budget request. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have anyone else?
Yes.
Hey, Harry.
Oh. My name, my name is Tim Wilson. I'm at fourteen Gilead Landing, and I'd like to make a comment regarding the proposed budget increase for, by the Hebron Board of Ed. It's my understanding that it's a fourteen and a half percent proposed increase, which seems extremely high, especially considering most other towns are in the range of a four percent increase, something in that range. It's my understanding that the fourteen and a half percent is the highest of all hundred and sixty-nine towns in the state by far. I believe the next highest is probably in the range of eight percent. So it certainly seems that an increase of fourteen and a half percent is extraordinary. It's my understanding that some of the rationale for that large increase is the, is a proposed additional preschool, which, again, my understanding is that's not mandated. So I'm not sure where that push for the additional preschool is coming from. In addition, it's my understanding that, that there was a, a grant received by the town about three hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars, again, one of the highest in the state. And one would think that that, that should keep the budget down. Just in, in conclusion, you know, fourteen and a half percent just seems absolutely outrageous. Again, especially considering, looking into all the other, the other school districts in the state, which, again, they're generally around four percent. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any other public comment? Any other public comment? Hearing none. Turn it over to Andy.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So at this time, I'd like to present Colin McNamara, the Superintendent of the Ram High School, to present Ram's budget to both the Boards of Selectmen and Boards of Finance and whoever else has joined us tonight on this meeting.
Andy, thank you so much, and good evening, everyone. I'm going to try to get this working so I can share my screen. This is a new platform for me, so I apologize. Donna, it's asking me something that I don't quite, optimize video maybe. Donna, it is not letting me.
She might have to reshare it again.
Well, it's, it's, it's giving me, it's saying, select content I want to share, but I don't know how to select.
If you just give, give me a minute and I will go into my email and see if I can find it. Hold on.
Great, thanks, Donna. Sorry for being difficult. Great, thanks, Donna. So I'll just start by saying good evening, everybody, and I appreciate the opportunity to come and speak with the Board of Selectmen and Board of Finance from Hebron. You know, this is something that I say to the Board of Education members that I've worked with over the past twenty-five years in education is that, you know, the work that you do is completely appreciated and, and, you know, you're volunteering your time for the betterment of the, of the schools and the community, and we, I just want to say on behalf of the, the staff of Ram, we appreciate the work that you do. I'm just going to start right in with my presentation. I am pleased to present the proposed budget for twenty-three, twenty-four fiscal year for Regional School District Eight, which supports the mission and vision of the district. The current budget for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year is thirty-one million, three hundred and six thousand, three, six hundred and fifty-three dollars and represents an overall budget increase of three point four percent. This amount is a combination of a net operating budget of thirty million, seven hundred and sixty-five thousand, six hundred and sixty-three, and a capital budget of five hundred and forty thousand, nine hundred and ninety dollars. Several factors have contributed to the proposed budget, which I will highlight throughout my presentation. The next slide shows the town levy for Hebron for next year would be fifteen million, two hundred and four thousand, three hundred and ninety-one dollars, or forty-nine point four-two percent of the total budget. I think it's important to point out that this is an approximate two hundred thousand dollar decrease from what I had initially presented to the Ram Board of Education during our January meeting. Initially, our budget increase was at a four point seven per, six, four point seven-six percent, and as I said, it is now been lowered to a three point four percent, and the effect so far on Hebron is approximately a two hundred thousand dollar decrease to the levy. I think it's really important that I point that out. Next slide, please, Donna. This slide shows the distribution of the operating budget by object, object category. As you can see, all object categories have increased with the exception of tuition cost, which has decreased by almost, by just, by almost six percent. Other significant budget drivers include, will be highlighted later on. The next slide, please, Donna. This chart shows the distribution of the proposed budget by the percentage of each object category in relation to the total budget. As you can see, seventy percent of the proposed operating budget is allocated to employee salaries and benefits. These are fixed costs associated with staffing our schools. Next slide, please, Donna. The increases associated with personnel include a health insurance, include health insurance costs and contractual salary increases. The district participates in an insurance consortium along with the town of Hebron and the other local school districts and local towns, and the rate for next year is currently at three percent. The insurance consortium is scheduled to meet on Thursday of this week, where we will discuss the possibility of reducing that percentage increase. And the Ram budget would be adjusted accordingly based on any changes that are made for insurance. I think it's important to point out that the district has made a concentrated effort over the past several years to ensure that salaries and benefits are competitive. Salary increases for different bargaining units are fair and less than current inflation costs. And I think it's important to point that out. So if you look at the contractual salary increases for certified staff, we're looking at three point four-nine percent, non-certified staff is at four point nine-six percent, and administrators is at forty-seven, sorry, a three point one-one percent. But if you look at the, what the Bureau of Labor Statistics provide for data related to consumer prices for all items, they rose six point five percent between December twenty-twenty-two and December of twenty-twenty-three. And it's, it's important to, to point that out, that we are not keeping up with the cost of inflation with regards to our salary increases. Next slide, please, Donna. So here you could see that there are some of the budget drivers that I'm talking, that I've discussed already. We're seeing a decrease in revenue projections by approximately thirty-two thousand dollars, an increase in financing lease costs to the tune of approximately twenty-four thousand dollars, natural gas costs approximately twenty-five thousand dollars, technology software approximately thirty thousand dollars, and custodial maintenance and supplies. I'll, I'll point this out later, but I think it's important to note that the Board, the Ram Board, has taken measures already to reduce some of these more significant budget drivers, and I'll highlight how the Board has already done that over the past couple of months. Next slide, please, Donna. Next year's budget includes a new teaching position that will focus on instructional practices and the coordination of curriculum revision and development. Having a full-time staff member focused on improving instructional practices and ensuring that the district's curriculum is current and aligned with state and national standards is imperative to maintaining rigorous and well-rounded academic offerings. This would be a full-time teaching position that works closely with teachers as well as district administration in supporting the improvement of instructional practices through a coaching model. The position will also work closely with teachers, department coordinators, and administration on curriculum development and revision. A stipend would be associated with a position similar to what is paid to department coordinators for taking on additional work and responsibilities. Factoring out, factoring in staff reductions that we are making, this position would essentially be FTE neutral. Another addition to the budget is, to the operating budget is the inclusion of the summer school credit recovery program that has been in place for the past two summers. It has been a successful program that has enabled students to recover credit loss and advance academically during the COVID nineteen pandemic. It will continue to be a valuable, continue to be valuable to Ram students who may be impacted by the new state required credit increase for graduation. And with conclusion of the ESER funding associated with the pandemic, the cost associated with continuing to run the program has been added to the operating budget. Also added to the operating budget is the LPN that was hired at the high school during the pandemic. This position currently exists, but has been grant-funded for the past two years. This position supports the health offices in both schools and has also reduced the need for acquiring a substitute nurse when the school's registered nurse is absent. The budget for next year also includes the reduction of two part-time positions that have been vacant during the school year. The first is a district-wide technology coach. The individual who previously held this position was hired to be the library media specialist for the start of the current school year. It was determined that it was not necessary to, to replace the instructional technology coach position as this person continues to support the, support the staff as a library media specialist. The position has not been included in next year's budget. And the other reduction is the point-five FTE family consumer science teacher position that was included in the twenty-two, twenty-three budget. The position was not be, able to be filled due to a lack of qualified applicants. And so again, that position is not being included in the budget. So when I talk about the instructional coach curriculum coordinator being essentially FTE neutral or full-time equivalent neutral, it's because of those positions that we've reduced. And, and so, again, we're not seeing significant staffing changes. I think it's important to highlight that the audit of the twenty-one, twenty-two budget for Ram was completed in February, and the feedback from the auditors was extremely positive. The audit did find that a surplus of three hundred and sixty-three thousand dollars remained for the twenty-one, twenty, remained from the twenty-one, twenty-two budget. Next slide, please, Donna. So earlier on, I mentioned how the Board has been, the Board at Ram has been responsive to the shared desire of all of the towns to reduce the twenty-three, twenty-four operate, budget for, for next year for the districts. That three hundred and sixty-three thousand dollar surplus that I mentioned from the twenty-one, twenty-two budget has been allocated to the district's capital non-recurring account to pay for three hundred and sixty-two thousand, two hundred and eighteen dollars in items or services that were initially in next year's budget, in next year's operating budget. So what we did was when we identified that we would have a three hundred and sixty-three thousand dollar surplus from last year's budget, we identified things that were in our operating budget that we could essentially use those money, use that money to purchase, thus reducing the budget request for twenty-three, twenty-four. And I've pointed out what those things were. One is a state-mandated HVAC review that school districts are required to do every five years, starting next year, for a hundred and four thousand dollars. Feminine hygiene projects and dispensers to the tune of approximately seventy-nine thousand dollars. Shot clocks and scoreboards to the, that are thirteen thousand, five hundred dollars. All three of those items are unfunded state mandates, so we have no choice. We have to put those things into motion. Wrestling mats for twelve thousand dollars, a baby grand piano for forty-three thousand, six hundred and fifty dollars. I think it's important to highlight, as I have with the Board of Education, that the piano that we're talking about, when we purchased it twenty years ago, was used. So we're talking about approximately a thirty-five-year-old baby grand piano that, basically, we've been told it no longer makes sense to reinvent or to invest any money to try to continue to keep utilizing this baby grand piano. So while I recognize that it is a cost, it's a cost that comes once every great, once every great while. Thirty-five years is an awfully long time to have an asset working effectively for us. Other, other materials are touch view monitors to replace aging smart board technology, a concrete containment system for soil and infield grass and gravel mix, door locks for security in, in between classrooms and for bathrooms, and commercial washers and dryers to be utilized by our custodial maintenance services. So again, those items equal out to be about three hundred and sixty-two thousand dollars, which were taken out of next year's operating budget. Again, having a significant impact on that reduction from a four point seven-six to the three, to where we currently are with the three point four percent increase. So the district anticipates further reductions will be able to be made prior to the scheduled public hearing and the Board's adoption of the budget on April third. We are hopeful, we are hopeful, as I mentioned earlier, that our insurance costs will be reduced even further and that diesel prices can be locked in at a lower rate than what is currently budgeted. I will tell you that yesterday, the Board's Subcommittee on for Finance met to discuss the possibility of using current funds from the twenty-two, twenty-three budget to pre-purchase some items that are currently in the twenty, or that are still remain in the twenty-three, twenty-four budget. The Finance Subcommittee was supportive of this idea, and it will be discussed with the full Board at our next meeting on Monday, March twentieth. If the plan goes forward, we anticipate being able to reduce the budget by approximately eighty-seven thousand dollars more. Again, we're, we're continuing to work to try to be responsive of the desire to have a, have a, a budget that will be supported by the entire school community. Next slide, please, Donna. So as you can see from this chart of adopted budgets from the past eight years, the district has a demonstrated history of fiscal responsibility. Like other school districts across the state that are contending with rising costs, the proposed budget for Region Eight is responsive to our current financial climate. I feel it is important to highlight that for the twenty-two, twenty-three budget included a one point four million dollar decrease in the bond payments from twenty-one, twenty-two. This decreased bond payment significantly reduced the twenty-two, twenty-three budget, which would have been a three point six-one percent increase without it. Next slide, please, Donna. When comparing Region Eight to other regional districts that are also secondary school system, Ram ranks among the lowest for per pupil expenditure. It is important to note that enrollment, that as enrollment in the deep, in the district has declined, our PP has increased and will likely to increase as the decline continues. Next slide, please, Donna. So I wanted to talk about enrollment a little bit. The graph showed, this graph shows the district's October one enrollment since two thousand and fifteen, as well as the projected enrollment through the twenty-three, thirty-two, two thousand and thirty-three school year. For the October two thousand and twenty-two report to the state, the district enrollment was one thousand, one hundred and eighty-eight. But as you can see, current projections indicate that enrollment will decrease for the next few years across the district before increasing to numbers above our current enrollment in ten years. So again, we are, we are, we have been decreasing. We're going to continue to decrease as a district for just a few years, and then we're going to start to see the trend go back upwards. And it's largely a result of the increased enrollment that is being realized right now by Hebron Public Schools. And I'm sure that's something that Superintendent Baird is going to highlight as well. As you can see from this next graph, enrollment at Ram Middle School is projected to remain steady for the next several years before beginning to increase by the twenty-eight, twenty-nine school year. Next slide, please, Donna. Ram High School is projected to climb enrollment over the next five years before experiencing the increase of those, the larger middle school class sizes. Next slide, please, Donna. I think it is important to highlight that over the next ten years, the elementary districts feeding into Ram are projected to increase their combined enrollment. This increased elementary enrollment will significantly impact Ram, and we must ensure the district remains prepared to meet the needs of that increased student population. Next slide, please, there you go. As buildings and grounds continue to age, it is important that we plan for the ongoing upkeep of the district facilities, as well as addressing the numerous, numerous capital projects that need attention to ensure that students, faculty, and the community have a safe and accessible facility for years to come. The funds proposed for this year's capital budget represent a small percentage of the current needs identified. The prioritized items requested for the twenty-three, twenty school year as recommended by the Board of Education Facility Subcommittee. The prioritized list and the associated costs were also reviewed and discussed in a joint meeting between the Facilities and Finance Subcommittee and shared with the Board of Education at our January meeting. They include projects such as chimney restoration, repairs to sidewalks and curbing, and ceiling cracks within the parking lots. The capital budget also includes funds to have a building evaluation report completed to update our capital plan as the last evaluation was conducted in two thousand and fifteen. Donna, there's one more slide for capital, and that just shows some of the other projects that we've identified for this year's capital plan. Next slide, please, Donna. The proposed budget presented reflects the efforts of district and school administrators, department coordinators, staff, and our Board of Education working collaboratively to put forward a responsible budget that maintains the high-quality education that, and facilities that the Ram community has come to expect and meeting the social emotional needs of students. It is the result of several months of collaboration between school and district administrators, coordinators, and staff, and is intended to provide local officials and the general public with a clear understanding of the district's programs and priorities. The administration and staff of the Region Eight, Regional School District Eight are grateful for the support of the Board of Education and the communities of Hebron, Andover, and Marlboro to provide to Ram and help ensure that our students are receiving high-quality educational programming, which prepares them to make meaningful contributions. This just shows a, a budget timeline of what we've done. We've had budget workshops. I've presented for the Marlboro Board of Finance. I'm obviously preventing, presenting to you all this evening, and I'm scheduled to present to the Andover Board of Finance next week. We have our budget, public budget hearing scheduled for April third. File, and that evening, it will also be followed by the Region Eight Board's special meeting. Our annual budget meeting will be May first, and the budget referendum will be May second. That concludes my presentation, and I can certainly do my best to answer any questions that members of the Board of Finance or Board of Selectmen may have.
Okay, I'll open it up as I usually do to the Board of Selectmen, Board of Finance. Please either raise your hand or let me know.
Mr. Chairman.
Janet, go ahead. I'm sorry, Tiffany.
Yeah, I just had a question on enrollment going forward. As it levels out through the years, is the, I got the impression from your, your, what you said, was Rams, excuse me, Hebron's allocation of the total will continue to increase because we're the people that have the growth? Is it, did I hear that right?
Well, yeah, I mean, your levy is based off of, the levies for each of the towns is based off of enrollment. So if, if the trend continues, that Hebron continues to be the driving force behind enrollment increases, which it is demonstrate right now, there's enrollment increases with the other districts as well, or projected enrollment increases with the other districts as well. But right now, I don't believe the projections with the other districts are the same as what they are for Hebron. That's correct.
Right. So even if the budget remain even in the next, you know, three or four years, we would still get a significant increase because of our enrollment increasing.
I think that's a fair assessment of things. I don't know, again, I don't know, you use the term significant. I don't know if I would, I, I, I don't know what that enrollment increase would be, but I would say it's safe to say you're going to see.
Sure, it was significant.
Yeah, and one of, one of the reasons that you're seeing that the swing is not just because of your increase in enrollment, but it's also a decrease in enrollment from one of the other towns, right? So it's, so it's, it's a swing in their direction, and it's a swing in your direction.
Yes, I understand. Thank you so much. Just want to make it clear. Thank you.
Thank you. Tiffany?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm going through some serious technical difficulties with my camera, so I apologize. Thank you for the information, Dr. McNamara. What I don't want to lose sight of is the two incidents that occurred this year at Ram High School. I think it's pretty clear that there's a need for DIEI programming and to address some serious issues that parents and constituents have come to me about. So I've reviewed your budget, and I just would like to know how you plan on addressing those initiatives within your budget and what that plan looks like in terms of funding. Thank you.
Sure. So I, I can't get into this, I don't have the specific dollars and cents, but I could talk from a high level for things. As a part of our operating budget every year, there is an allocation for professional development for teachers and staff. We also get a, a, I would say, a decent amount of money each year. It varies from year to year through grant funding for professional development for, for, for district staff as well. I would anticipate utilizing money that is budgeted for. I would anticipate utilizing money that is budgeted for professional development, coupled with that grant money that we anticipate receiving to continue to provide the professional development work that we've already begun. As you may know, we had a we hosted a community conversation that was open to the public. We've already done some professional development with staff and and we're continuing to move in that direction as well. I, interestingly enough, I just had a conversation earlier on today, a meeting today about our strategic plan. Some of you may know that our board is embarking on the strategic planning process as well. And 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 the incidents that happened, the very unfortunate incidents that happened. I think are naturally going to find themselves a part of the conversation when we discuss setting a direction. And and having conversations around how we are going to continue those conversations related to making sure that we address those issues at more of a systemic level.
Thank you. I think that's critical because I can't begin to tell you how many parents have come to me and spoken about pulling their children from the RAM school system because they don't think their children will be welcomed there. And we all know that would have an impact on your budget as well. So as possible, it would be great to hear updates about that, you know, in the years to come. Thank you.
Thank you for your feedback. I appreciate it.
Other questions? I have a couple. Do you know what the actual number of the additional students from Hebron is? And I'm sure there's documentation. I can find that.
I could. Danny, I could tell you. I don't have that doubt. I don't have those numbers with me right this minute, but what I could do with any question that I'm unable to answer, I will communicate the response and the information with Andy and then just entrusted Andy will share it with members of the Board of Selectmen and Board of Finance.
Yeah, I just, as I say, when I first heard the additional dollars to Hebron, I have to admit I was shell shocked. Wow. And then my my only other question, you had in there, first off, a comment. And I'm going to start. Here we go again. Unfunded mandates. I added it up quickly and it was literally just shy of two hundred thousand, just on on that one slide that you had presented. You know, you hear a state that says, oh, yeah, we fully support and fully fund education. Well, obviously, that was a lie. And unfunded mandates have bitten us year after year. And it's not, you know, your fault or anybody else's fault. It's the state. On the exit lights, what I am asking you to verify. There are a lot of programs now that as you update things and go to the new LED technology. That a lot of those things are are followed with either point of source rebates or rebates that can be applied for through ever source. Whoever your contractor is, really stand on their toes to make sure that those rebates are being passed down to, you know, the town, the consumer RAM, because there are some contractors that quite literally keep a good sizable portion of that rebate for themselves. So I I just urge you to to verify and or see if there's, you know, because of the being a regional district. If there is a direct buy that you can do right through the supply houses. Which may help to, you know, to save some of that money. So other than that, any other questions? Hearing none. Thank you very, very much.
Well, again, I appreciate everybody taking the time to 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 give me this platform, and I want to thank the members of the RAM Board of Education who were also able to make it this evening. I do know that there are some in the in the virtual audience, and I just appreciate y'all being here and supporting our budget. Thanks. Thanks so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Andy?
Okay, Mr. Chairman. Getting back to the agenda, item number five would be the Hebron Board of Education budget. And I think we have Dr. Beard with us here along with the Chairperson of that Board, Heather Pettit.
And Donna, I emailed you the presentation, so I'm hoping that you can drive that for us tonight.
Okay, hang on a minute.
Thank you, Donna.
Thank you. Good evening. I would like to thank Ms. Del Rosso and the Board of Finance for having us this evening and for allowing us to present. I'd also like to acknowledge Mr. Larson and the Board of Selectmen, as well as Mr. Tierney. And also Mr. McNamara and the RAM Board of Education members that are with us this evening. Along with myself, Dr. Bear, the Superintendent and Ms. Allison Schmizel, our Vice Chair of the Board of Education, will be presenting as well with me this evening. And you can, I don't know if you can put it on full slideshow, but if you want to go to the second slide, that'd be great. So this evening, we are excited to present our budget to you, and this slide just talks about a little bit of the power of the budget. The two thousand and twenty-three twenty-four budget will continue the work that's under underway that we have outlined our district advancement plan that we update throughout the year and that can, and it was in our budget book when we sent it to the town, but it's also online as long along with all the individual presentations that go along with it. So the power of the budget is meet the historical enrollment demands for our popular preschool program. Invest in state required reading instructional materials and assessments. So to Mr. Larson's point earlier, some state mandates have come down that we're required to do as a district starting the next school year. Dr. Bear will talk about that in a little bit. Continue our student intervention support programs for academics that were previously funded by grants that are now ending. And then we have new grant funds that will support curriculum and professional development work for our STEAM program. We're going to need to fund technology purchases at historic levels to keep pace with usage. And we're going to increase mental health supports through, and I'm very excited to say this, through a grant that we just received, the Hebron Public Schools received three hundred and twenty-four thousand dollars in a mental health grant from the state. It does require us to maintain our current level of services for students. If we don't, they will pull that funding. But Dr. Baird, if you want to talk in a little bit more detail in regard to what that grant is and and how we're going to be utilizing it, that'd be great.
Sure. So, you know, districts were invited to submit to the state grant proposals to increase mental health supports. And as part of that grant, we needed to report out on our current enrollment, number of students and the number of mental health staff members we currently have. And make the case that we needed more mental health support. And Hebron was one of the three top towns to get funded, three hundred and twenty-four thousand dollars over three years. And what this is going to do is it's going to expand our school psychologists. We currently have two school psychologists funded through local dollars. We have a point six school psychologist funded by a federal grant. And the this state grant will will provide us with an additional two point four, sorry, one point four school psychologists. So we would have two, two school psychologists at each school.
Thank you. So our budget process timeline is here and how we we and what we do throughout the season of the budget season and how that works. I will say this year we took a collaborative approach to the budget and we didn't do the normal superintendent recommend the budget and then the board goes through and makes their additions or or changes. This year we took a collaborative approach. So the schools and departments submitted their costs and expenses to the administration. And then the board worked with the administration on the budget collaboratively. We held a budget forum just on December eighth for families, for the community and families to hear from them in regard to our budget. And then we had special meetings to continue working collaboratively on the budget, including, you know, decreasing some costs and certain line items from departmental requests. And then we presented a joint recommended budget to the community with a budget presentation in January and then February. We presented any changes that we made and then we certified to the town per charter by February fifteenth. But I will say I feel that this is a really fiscally responsible budget. I know it's a it seems a hard number to swallow, and I think when you hear more about what we have going on and all the wonderful things that are happening, you will hopefully understand why. So budget drivers. So I don't know, Tom, do you want to take this or I am happy to take this?
Sure, happy, happy to, happy to take this question, to take this slide. We have three main areas where we are seeing growth in terms of driving our budget dollars up. The first is around our growing student enrollment. We've seen, we're projecting a fifteen percent growth over the last three years. Our fall enrollment in two thousand and twenty was six hundred and thirty-five students. Our fall projection for next year is seven hundred and thirty-three students. We currently have seven hundred and four students, three hundred and fifty-three at Gilead and three hundred and fifty-one at Hebron Elementary School. We've also seen a growth in our special education population. We have, we've gone from one to three students who are outplaced. And we have, and as you know, that's a that's a high cost. And we have had a twenty-one percent increase in the number of students with disabilities in the district over the last year, and that's driven an over thirty percent increase in special education's costs over the last over the last year. We've also seen wait lists for our preschool programs. We know we have more students who would like to, more families who would like to access our preschool program. And this budget is responsive to that. We started the year, restarted the budget process in a five hundred thousand dollar hole that we had to climb out of as we were, as we were developing the budget. We have three hundred thousand dollars less in grant funds to support our students for next year. This includes our federal IDEA grant for special education students. We utilized two years of funding last year, knowing that that was going to help offset last year's budget. And that we would hope to see some declines in in some of those expenses, but that's not been the case. And so we have one less year's worth of federal grant money to support that 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 need moving into next year. I mentioned the special education out placements that we went from one to three. We had not budgeted for three for this year. We had budgeted for one. So that also is a two hundred thousand dollar deficit baked into the budget for next year. We also, because we are projecting to end the year with needing to access our non-lapsy account to balance out the the end of the year. Not in a position to do any pre-purchasing for next year. We've traditionally done some pre-purchasing to bring our number down at this time of the year, specifically in the area of technology hardware. And so we're not able to do that for next year. We also, just like everybody else, are looking at inflation and labor costs as being a major driver this year. We have new employment contracts for teachers in our non-certified group that were just negotiated. And that is driving some higher salary increases and benefits. We also have those grant funded positions moving into the general fund. We have aging school buildings with accelerated maintenance needs, and we are thankful for the facility study that's that's underway to look at future future needs for for our two buildings. And then we have inflation impacting fixed costs like fuel utilities and supplies. Donna, if you go to the next slide, it'll show the the dollar amounts for these. So overall increases fourteen point five seven percent. We have seen some other districts in in similar ballparks of over ten percent increases for next year. I know of at least two districts close by that are at that ten or exceeding that. So we maybe we may be high, but there are others that are that are not far not far behind. Contractual costs, we're looking at a three point seven five percent increase. Maintaining current support. So these are positions that have been grant funded in the in the years prior. That includes our two tutors. We have a part-time speech position. Our LPN, you know, Superintendent McNamara has talked about his LP and we also have an LPN that we've been slowly moving into the budget. So this is a halftime, half, half of the LPN needs to go in. This year we moved half of the LPN in last year. Five special education paraprofessionals. And then our additional contract with H M for our social workers. So the town provides a certain number of days a week for our social workers, and then we contract with H M to increase that allotment. So for example, our social worker at Hebron Elementary School is full time, so we we pay for the additional days outside of what the town pays H M for for the baseline. So that is all captured under that category of maintaining current student supports, those grant funded positions that we currently have. Additional student supports and really the next next couple of categories talk about new things that are being added into the budget for next year. Would be a point four or five reading specialist for Hebron Elementary School. We have more students who need support in the area of reading. And we have the additional out placements that have been budgeted for next year for the projected number of students who are going to be in those outplacement settings. The next item is preschool. So the additional classroom for preschool to meet the enrollment demand is coming in about a two percent increase. Supplies and required ELA programming material. So there is a state mandate to implement specific reading assessments and curriculum materials. And so that has driven that line up. We also, because we're not doing any pre-purchasing of technology hardware, there's a sixty-six thousand dollar increase to tech higher hardware. It just represents business as usual, the same number of Chromebooks and iPads that we would be buying any other year, but that we cannot do any pre-purchasing for. The next category is classroom teachers and class size. So with our growing enrollment, there are additional class sections that have been included in the budget for next year. One teacher for each school, which is coming in at one point six one percent. And then we have our facilities and operation costs. So things like fuel utilities, things of that nature that are just coming in at higher numbers than we've seen before. Donna, if you go to the next slide. So the majority of our expenses in a school district are staff. So I also took the information from that last slide. And I presented it a little bit different in terms of just the staffing pieces. So our major staffing changes that we embarked on for next year is we've eliminated a halftime administrative assistant to central office. We really want to prioritize resources to schools, especially with our with our budget number being where it is. The items that are next in green, these are the additional staff that we that would be new positions for next year. Many of them for for preschool, but you see again that the two classroom teachers and the reading specialist. The black items are items that are grant funded positions that we're just looking to move into the general fund. And I also just wanted to talk briefly to the the shift from the dean of student positions to to the system principal positions. You know, this would be something that would be needed as part of our preschool work, but also to support our student enrollment. When we when we created the dean of students positions a few years ago, we eliminated a central office position. Again, to prioritize those resources to schools. So we shifted from a central office curriculum position to the two dean of students so that we could shift the curriculum pieces to the principals and myself. We also knew that the schools needed more support in terms of helping students with behavior challenges. And and we're experiencing some dysregulation to their emotions. The what we've seen is a need to shift those positions from from the deans to assistant principal. So these are not new positions. We're just shifting the title. It's shifting the bargaining group that they're with. So they currently, the deans are part of the teachers' union. We're moving to, we've negotiated with the administrative union to move them into the administrative union at a reasonable cost. And so that's for the dean of students to then be doing staff supervision, which we're finding is a need. Donna, if you go to the next slide. All right, Heather, do you want to start off the preschool discussion?
You're on mute, Heather. All right, thank you. My dog is barking, so I wanted to mute. So I will start over. So I am excited to talk about our enrollment demands for preschool. As both boards, especially members that have been on for a while, know that we have had this preschool conversation over several years because there's always been a historic demand for our preschool program. As the board of finance and the board, like we know, on the board asks for a supplemental appropriation this school year to meet the demand. And we thank you for at least considering it. And we understand, you know, when it was mentioned to me by several board members, that it really should be put in the budget for the voters to vote on. We agreed. The more, the board was more than happy to do that as we wanted to be able to service all the children in Hebron. We have always had a historically a waitlist except for, you know, the one or two years during COVID. Before COVID, now we have about 23 family students on the waitlist for this upcoming year. You know, our preschool program is a NIAC accredited program. We have experienced certified staff in our schools helping our preschoolers get ready for kindergarten, especially with the pandemic and, and kids not just having that social behavioral or even, you know, the preschool educational portion. It really is a benefit. There is significant data on the benefits of high quality preschool for students. So I will just mention a couple of these. They include, you know, if they preschool provides fundamental learning and supports student transition, the kindergarten. It offers increased opportunities for socialization. Emphasizes social emotional learning and growth of self-regulation skills. Provides early intervention and support to students experiencing academic and developmental challenges. Increases gains on achievement test scores. Decreases occurrences of grade retention and identification for specialized services, which helps saves costs down the road. And increases high school graduation rates. Decreases crime and delinquency rates. And allows children who missed out on a year of quality preschool due to COVID, including, like I mentioned, including academic behavioral and social experience, a successful start to preschool. So what we're looking to do is to add an additional classroom to our current program. So we can help meet that demand and help take as many students that we can into our program and alleviate as much as possible the waitlist. So currently, like I mentioned, there's 23 students on the waitlist. What we're proposing is a half-day program that we have right now for four days a week shifts to five days a week. So it's an equitable number of days per year. We moved from four to five classrooms. So that would mean an additional preschool teacher and special education teacher. Because we need those for any children coming in that require services. And then an additional two and a half parent educators to support the program. And as Dr. Brad mentioned, it would be kind of a shifting, if you will, or limiting the dean of student positions to assistant principals to maintain our NIAC accreditation. And include a one-time cost of furniture, program materials and PD first.
And then Donna, before you move on to the next slide, I just want to one, one, one mistake there is it's actually 1.5 paras. We were able to reduce by one when we were putting the budget together, but I'm sorry, I forgot to catch that on the slide for this presentation. And I can just note too, that the one-time cost is approximately 14,500 for the, for the furniture and the, and the one-time purchase of materials. Donna, if you can go to the next slide. So there's been a lot of questions about what are the different funding sources for preschool? What's required for preschool? What's not required? We wanted to sort of break that down over the next two slides. So bear, bear with me here, but this is where a lot of questions have come in. So we are required to maintain at minimum a 50/50 ratio of students with disabilities and non-disabled peers. There's an additional 3.5 staff members that we would need to add on to our team to, would accommodate an additional 23 students. And as Heather mentioned, we have a waitlist that would be essentially eliminated with the additional classroom. The, to maintain that 50/50 ratio, we would need at least two preschool classrooms, some years three, depending on how many students with disabilities we would have in the program at any one time. So that would be the, that would be the bare, bare minimum. We are also required by the State Department of Education to report out annually on our profile and performance report, how we are working to eliminate disparities in our program in terms of equity of access and and eliminating any, any disproportionality in terms of demographics, economic isolation, those types of things. And so when we design our preschool program, our NIA, we have our school readiness grant, which supports families that have an economic need for support for, for, to afford preschool. We don't set up one classroom that's the quote, school readiness classroom, because we wouldn't put all of our students who have some economic challenges all in one classroom. We, we want to spread students out so that we have a diverse selection of students in every, in every classroom. And that includes our students with disabilities. We, we don't want to set up a program where we have a classroom that's 50/50 between students with disabilities and, and non-disabled peers and then another classroom with no disabled students. So part of our workaround, this preschool model is to eliminate those disparities that we see in our current programming. So, you know, as we've mentioned, we, we've proposed a five-classroom model. This would maximize the size that's achievable with our current parking lot. So we, we wouldn't, we really can't offer more than five classrooms. It also maxes out our, our number of classrooms available within, within the school building. So we're, we're bound by the building itself. So, you know, I think while a lot of towns, there may be an ultimate goal of universal preschool, which would be, you know, preschool for, for all with no tuition, that, that's not the program that we have here. And it's not achievable with our current campus. So if you look at the table, you can see the different funding sources we have for preschool. We have general funded positions. We have tuition funded positions, school readiness tuition positions, school readiness grant funded positions, and then our federal IDEA special education grant, which has some specific dollars for preschool. And you can see the, the pieces of positions that are funded with those different funding sources. So the, the local tax dollars in the, in the proposed model would fund 2.9 teachers. There are six teachers overall in the program. You can see that it does not fund any parent educators because we have them right now, just sort of ease, sort of ease of budgeting. We have those slated to be funded by tuition and grants. But there's 5.5 pair educators, and then you can see the totals, you know, running along the bottom. But that, that's our preschool model as budgeted and proposed. Donna can go to the next slide. So here's that same, same funding structure again, but the board of finance, one of the questions that you put forward was how many preschool, how much, how much local dollars are supporting, we're supporting the 2122 school year model. This is the same model we have in place this school year as well. And the numbers in the table of it was for this school year versus two years ago would change by hundreds of, of, of a decimal point here. So it's pretty much the same. So you can see that the general fund right now, or in 2122, but similar now is funding 2.75 positions. You can see it's a mixture of teachers and para, para educators. So that, that's where we stand right now with a four-classroom model. There's been questions too around is preschool self-funded? Well, you know, we do have to spend some general fund dollars on preschool because we're required to offer that special education, special education program with that minimum 50/50 ratio. The, it's sort of a complicated question. I think at one time, you know, before I, before I've been here, and I've been here now, this is my fourth school year with you. If, I'm sure it was self-funded, that it was, you know, it was, it was neutral, but you know, as teachers moved up the salary scale and moved on or off of health insurance, I, I don't know that you could say that it has stayed that. But so, so the short answer is, is no, but it's, it's more complicated than that. We have four classrooms, and if we were to eliminate one of those classrooms right now, we would have a top step teacher who is tenured, who would not lose their job. They would, they would go to a classroom position and a, a less senior teacher would be the one who would be losing their position. And so the, the amount of money you're taking in for tuition exceeds how much you would save by laying off a less experienced teacher. So if you eliminated a classroom, it would actually have a net negative impact to the budget. It would put us in a worse financial position than if we kept, kept the, the classroom. So I know, I know that's nuanced, but, but that's just sort of the reality of how it would work in terms of if you were to, if you were to eliminate a, a classroom section. Donna, could you go to the next slide? So somewhere to Colin's presentation, we're also providing some context here in terms of where Hebron falls in the district reference group, which is like districts to us. And the net current expenditures includes local funds, but also grant funds. So you can see that Hebron is below average within our, our jerk reference group. And as we move to the next slide, you'll see that we've been sliding, we're, we're going in, in, down because our, our number of dollars that we're spending per student is decreasing. So this is that same enrollment shift as you see from 20, from the 2021 school year of 635 students to the projection next year of 733. You can see the dollars as they have, as they have shifted per student. So I don't want to belabor this slide. I know Donna is going to, has the presentation and she can send it out to people afterwards. So Donna, could you go to the next slide? So here's that same, same information again, but presented in graph form. I think this, this is an area to spend a little bit more time. Similar to Colin's point two around inflation. So we took the amount of money you see in the blue column, $18,206 that we were spending per student in the, in the 2021 school year. We adjusted it for inflation using the December inflation rates to see how much would we spend per student if we were spending at that same level over the next several years. And you would, you can see that over our four years, if we were adjusting for inflation and wanted to spend the same as we were spending per student, the next year we would be spending over 20,000. And if you go back to that Dirk chart, you'll see that that still is below average. So you can, you can, you can stay on that graph. And you can see the, the board did propose spending less. And part of that was because we did have some COVID grant funds that we could help buffer, buffer that enrollment increase. But as we sort of said at the beginning of the presentation, we, we now see that those funds are gone, but our needs are still here and our enrollment continues to go up. I think Heather, you also wanted to talk a little bit about this slide?
Uh, yes. So thank you, Tom. Let me go back to. So as, as Dr. Ben mentioned, this slide shows that although our enrollment is going up, our dollars per student are going down. So for instance, last year we requested 2.3%. We were given 1.2%. The town has given a 5% increase. As Dr. Ben mentioned earlier, we also had increased sped special education costs that we, we didn't know about when we had to certify our budget in February. So those came into effect. And so to speak to the earlier slide of, of starting in a hole, you know, currently we're in a, a complete budget freeze in our district. Because we're projected to actually need some of that non-lapsing account funds that the board of finance graciously established for us. So grants in the past, in the past two years from, you know, from COVID really, right? The S R grants and ARPA grant helped buffer our, our enrollment increase. But unfortunately, we don't have those anymore. And so, you know, the cost is going to have to be figured into the budget going forward. Thank you.
And Heather, I'll just mention too, for everybody here, you know, we are, we are expecting more excess cost reimbursement for those out placements and my understanding is the town did receive the first of two allotments of that funding. It's going to come in two-stage. It's going to come in two stages this year. And so I know Elaine's going to be looking into that to let us know how much has been received so far. And then we'll get our second allotment in May. And once we have a better idea of what those two allotments are, we'll have a better sense of how much of our non-lapsing account will need to be utilized. All right, Donna, you can go on to the next slide.
So the Hebron taxpayer impact, you know, Mr. McNamara and Dr. Barrett both spoke about this and in, in great detail about our enrollment increases. So although it does drive our budget, it also is great news and good news. I'm going to continue to say that, like, we want families to move to Hebron. They're moving to Hebron for our wonderful schools, Hebron Public Schools, Ram Public Schools, and they're moving here for our community because we have a wonderful community. And it's a testament to all those, those bodies. So I, I really think it's something to embrace. You know, our enrollment has increased over 15.54% in the last three years. And obviously, especially Hebron's at Ram is increasing as well, and at the same rate and will continue to do so. And that will continue to occur. So that's where a lot of our.
Oh, go ahead. Yeah. So our, our, you know, Colin mentioned our, the, the 10-year projection. We got an updated projection from NESTAC this morning, actually. And it shows our 10-year projection to be at 903 students. So we're currently at 704. And in 10 years, we're projected to be 903. So that, and that's just going to continue to translate into, you know, a 20-year, you know, growth, growth in term for Ram. So it, 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 it's not going away.
So the board of ed is not able to fund a school resource officer in our budget. And so the school resource officer is currently funded through the town budget rather than the school budget. And there's been unanimous support around this discussion among all of the boards. And so over the summer, the board of education did unanimously support and show their good faith in favor of a second SRO, a second officer to fully cover both of our elementary schools. Because truly there was just unanimous agreement, the importance of the officer that, you know, in addition to not only security clearly, you know, within our schools, but the officer also trains staff, teaches health and safety to our youth and staff, you know, forms positive relationships with our youth and their families. And, you know, all in addition to ensuring that our schools are as safe as possible. So just an undeniably valuable resource. And so, you know, it's our hope that the board of selectmen and the board of finance will continue to support this important request. I know that the board of education, you know, we want to express our gratitude and just say thank you for the use already of ARPA dollars for an additional vehicle to support key important training that's needed, emergency kits, already increasing police staffing hours, you know, all really kind of moving us in the direction of even more coverage. And so, you know, families have been asking for this for, for quite some time. This has been an ongoing discussion in Hebron, you know, through the public safety task force years ago. And, you know, really the reality is, is that we all know that there may be times that staff do need to be absent, that an officer needs to be absent. And so, you know, we're just really grateful for the action that has already been taken. You know, and, you know, really feel that, you know, we want to continue to move in the direction of really achieving the goal here and that we're well positioned of having, you know, even more full coverage, if you will, at not only Gilead Hill and Hebronell, but both Ram Middle and High School.
All right, Donna. All right, Mr. Larson, your, your favorite topic, state mandate. So current mandates that we're, we're, we're focused on are the reading program materials and assessments that I talked about earlier. So it's certainly an unfunded mandate that is at expense to us for next year. School climate requirements. So the, the schools have been in enrollments, you know, under 300, 290 students perhaps. But, you know, we're over 350 at both schools now. That is 60 more kids than 290 at this point. You know, we're not suspending kids in the early grades, that, you know, that's a state mandate, but something we want to support. But we do have students that have behavioral challenges and become dysregulated during the day. And having two administrators at the building is really necessary for safety to continue to be in a proactive stance to helping prevent incidents before they occur, rather than being react reactive. We also saw a requirement last year for a guaranteed bylaw 30-minute lunch and, or break time for staff. So we can't say, oh, we can only get you 25 minutes today. I'm sorry. We, we have to give them 30 minutes. So we have to have staff available to alleviate, to, to provide that coverage. But mandates that are coming down, coming down the pike. Minimum salary for teachers and para- Minimum salary for teachers and para educators. This is being discussed at the state level. It's unclear where that money would come from to, to pay teachers and paras that minimum. We would estimate 10 to 15 teachers that are not at that minimum that's being proposed at the, at the state level. So that's something we're watching carefully. Health insurance for part-time para educators, that's going to, that's looking to be a requirement for next year. We do have a couple of part-time para educators, but they would be, we would be required to offer them health insurance regardless of our collective bargaining agreements. Free meals. So there's talk about continuing free meals for next year, but shifting that cost onto wealthier districts and Hebron would qualify under the designation that it's being discussed. So I'm hopeful that if, I think free meals would be a great initiative, but I think that the state should be funding that. I don't think that should come down as to a local cost. Additional school climate requirements, they're talking about new special education requirements that would require us to, again, have staff available to help students who are becoming dysregulated. So that's something we're watching carefully too. Planning time requirements similar to the 30-minute guaranteed lunch, guaranteed planning time, which is a very complicated schedule to coordinate at the elementary level. So we support this idea, but at the same time, making it a legal requirement helps the ante in terms of being able to have the staff that is available to provide the coverage when teachers are doing that planning time. There's also the HVAC study that Colin spoke to. We didn't include it in our budget this year with the hope that that was going to be delayed. It does seem like that it is going to be delayed, but we felt like it was better timed after the facility study. But we estimate that HVAC study at around $70,000. I think Ram added around 100, which kind of makes sense, I think, in terms of square footage. So, you know, that's, that's an expense that we're going to be looking at in the future. So just something to have on our radar. On a positive end, I know we've, in the past, the Board of Finance has talked about the ECS formula and the money that the town is going to get for students. I had a great meeting today with Representative Curry. He's Chair of the Education Committee, talking more about the ECS formula. Hebron, because of our growth in enrollment, is going to see less harm in the, in the, in the funding formula and moving forward. So, you know, that's a positive development for the town. And because we have more special education students, they're weighted more heavily in that formula. So that, that will also be helpful. And then our federal IDEA grant is, will also be responsive to our growth in special education students. So that's something where down the road, we should be getting some more funding. It's just not here today. And before people panic, you know, I've talked about the increase in special education students. I just want to, you know, offer some perspective. You know, we're, we're looking at four out placements next year. I know of a much smaller district than us that has four out placements now. We are on the low end for the number of out placements that we have. And Hebron has been lucky to be on the low end because those are, those are high expenses. And then our prevalence rate, we are below the state average even with this increase. So we have a smaller percentage of special education students compared to the average district in Connecticut. But we're just seeing our numbers move, move up, but still under the state average.
So we're happy, there's questions and suggestions. I would just ask, you know, the community, if you'd like to email the Board of Education and Dr. Baird and in regard to the budget, our budget email is there. There's also, if you'd like to reach out to the Board of Finance, the town budget email is there as well. We are happy to answer any general questions tonight. Dr. Baird and Ms. Schlar are working on the questions that the Board of Finance already sent to the board. And we'll be sending our response to those questions to, back to you by the end of this week. You know, for any specific questions, you know, please send them in writing so we can respond and maybe add them to our response to you this week with appropriate data. Thank you.
Okay. I'll open it up, Board of Selectmen, Board of Finance members that have any questions? Nobody? Janet?
So I have a lot of questions. So I guess, are you saying that you'd rather see them in writing than me doing them here?
No, if you have general questions, feel free. I'm just saying if you need like some of the data, some of the questions and data that you wanted, you know, we're not going to be able to speak to like a page of data this evening.
Yeah. First, I hope everybody allows me a personal note. My granddaughter Grace came back to live in Connecticut. And I just want to thank everybody in the Gilead environment for the welcome that they gave her because she is so thrilled to go to school every day. And that's all about you guys. So I just did want to put that out there. One of my questions is more, I just need an education. So I, we received the thing saying that the state mandated multiple spending cap increase is 6.1% and that we have breakage of about 738,000. Is that, what's the impact of that? Is that already built into this budget? Or is that going to be something that comes as the year goes on? If we don't get down to that, you know, reduce our budget by that amount?
Jen, I think that's a question to the town because that's not, that's not in our budget.
Oh, because they're saying it's because of the special education numbers. Okay.
I think Elaine probably could feel that.
Yeah, I'll keep it thin to regular. So the preschool, let me see. I have them in length. So one of the questions I had was, it showed that you really weren't increasing the teacher amount for the preschool from last year to this year. As you said, you know, like this would be, if we didn't have five, it would be more of a negative impact on the teachers. But so then what does the 200,000 plus breakage represent?
I think, Dr. Baird, oh, okay.
Yeah, yeah. So on the slide, it represents a couple of things. It represents the one-time cost of 14,500. It represents, if you look at like the five classroom model versus the four classroom model. You know, we're, we're funding 2.9 teachers in the five classroom model with, with local dollars. But currently we're funding approximately 1.75. So we're funding more teachers. We're funding less one para, but there's a net increase in the amount of money that we're, they were spending. We also factored in Janet in that, in that preschool number, the 226,000 you're talking to, right?
Yeah. Yeah.
That also includes the cost of shifting from the dean of students to the assistant principal.
Okay, so that is, that was a question. So that, thank you, that, that's a. And then, what was this? Did you consider any piece of raising the cost to the parents? I know currently, just from my own thing, my granddaughter, I think that the preschool in town, if you went to a vendor, is about 1,000 a month. And I believe you guys are like 650. I didn't, I just didn't know if that was a discussion that was had.
Yeah, so it kind of depends. It's hard, it's a hard apple to apples because our preschool is not as long of a day as a private preschool typically. So some families also add on the Parks and Rec Department program to get before and after. So to that, that's one component of that. And last, two years ago, we did do a pretty extensive presentation at a Board of Ed meeting where we considered lots of different models for preschool and different tuition amounts. And so the board has considered that in the past, but there's not an increase in tuition factored into this year's budget. So it currently stands at $6,750 for the 10-month program.
Yes. Then another one was, we, I was just wondering if there was any study done on the impact of additional preschool through the town versus AHM and the local businesses?
No.
No, okay. And in enrollment and the.
I'm sorry, Janet, I just wanted to like, to speak to that before you moved on to your next question. I know Donna Lanza had brought that question up during a recent school readiness meeting to Becky at AHM. You know, AHM, I can't speak to the other programs in town, but they do service not just Hebron. So they do, they would still be servicing, they service our teachers, children sometimes at, at both, you know, Ram and Hebron, as well as like Andover and Marlboro. So, so we have all of those factors in there. But I think, you know, the boards, you know, you know, we have to put forward a budget that is best for the community, best for families, you know, best, you know, you know, it also goes toward our economic development and growth and does increase home values, right? Everyone's coming here because of our wonderful community and schools. So I think when we think about preschool as far as the Board of Education, we want to offer, you know, our families who are wanting to come here, that additional class with a credit, you know, with teachers that have that certification who are experienced, credited, and just wonderful with our kids. That's what we were thinking. But I wanted to speak to that because we did, Donna did mention that when AHM was there.
And I'll just add to, the lottery is Thursday. And as for the number of applicants that are in, if we offered the same preschool structure as we currently have, we would have 23 students on the waitlist.
Okay, and if you have the fifth class, will there be no waitlist?
It, it would be anywhere from zero to six because it would depend on whether or not somebody who had wanted like a half-day slot, if they were only offered a full-day slot. But everybody would have a place, whether or not they accepted it is a different question.
Thank you. Then I'm going to get into my little crazy math thing. So the preschool enrollment, is that a head count or an FTE? Because like some of these kids are going halftime. How do you count them when you, when you're doing like the per-student spending and things like that? Do you count them as a full person or the half that they are?
On, we count them as a, as a full.
Okay.
And we, and Jen, I'll just say like, that's what we've done over the years. And when we do our, when I, when I mentioned that 635 baseline, that was true back then. And it's, that is how it's reported to the state. So on the profile performance report, if you go back to fall 2020, you'll see that 635.
So is that how it's done through the whole state of Connecticut? I'm just asking because I'm just trying to learn.
Yeah, we report a number, we report a number of kids.
Okay. See here. So, oh, how many, you have 90 kindergartners in your, in your presentation. Sorry, what is the number you're currently at?
Like registered for next year, you mean?
Yeah.
It's in the 60s, which is, which is similar to what we saw last year.
Okay. Yeah, and it got up to 88, right?
Yep, and, and I mentioned earlier, like, we got our newest NESTAC projection this morning. Just happened to come now, we get one in the spring, we do one, we get one like November, then one in the spring. It was 92, but we'll just have to see. It's a really tough one kindergarten for us, especially when it comes at around 90. Because if we're less than 90, then we could do one less section of preschool kindergarten, like what we have, what happened last year, right? But if it's over 90, then we need the additional section. So we've budgeted for the need and then we'll have to see in August what, where we really land.
And then, and this is just me. So when I, when I take the, you know, take preschool out of the picture, but with the math, and I take K through five, which is currently there, and I take them and push them up to the next year, you know? And then I add the preschool that you guys have in there. For this year, I'm seeing a 1.7% enrollment increase for just that portion of the school. Am I, you know, what am I seeing that's different than what you guys are seeing?
I think, send me your numbers so I could take a look at them. But we're, we built a budget for 733 students, which includes the additional preschool classroom.
Okay, I was just looking, I'm just talking about K through six. Because your current numbers include an increase of like six, sixth graders and five fifth graders. And I mean, there's like three houses for sale in town that I just don't think that's going to happen. So that was, that was just where I was going with that. That's all I got. Thank you for being so putting up with me. Bye.
Okay. And now we have both Mike and Mel. Mike, did you want to go? I think your hand was up first. If I'm wrong, I apologize, Mel.
Sure, thank you, Mr. Chairman. And Dr. Pettit, excuse me, Dr. Baird and Ms. Pettit, thank you very much for your presentation and your work on behalf of the Board of Education. I just have a few questions, some of which focus on enrollment. And I've seen the slides and I've seen the materials that were submitted to us where you talk about a 15% enrollment increase over the past three years. That takes us back to the 2020, 21 school year. Is that, am I, am I accurate there?
The 2021 school year, yes.
2021, okay. If those kids are already in the school district, why are they being considered in terms of increased enrollment for purposes of this budget?
I don't understand your question.
Well, when you, when you talk about an increase of 15% over the past three years, looking at the NASCAT, NASDAQ materials that we were provided.
Yeah.
If I'm reading this correctly, the historical percentages, and I'm on page 32 of the materials that were provided to us. The difference for the K through six year, K through six grades in the 2021 year was a negative 2.4% decrease from the year before. And then in 20 to 20, or excuse me, 21 to 22, there was an increase of 42 students, which according to this was a 7.5% increase. And I think we had these discussions in past years that 2021 or 21, 22 time period was right after COVID when people were moving out to rural towns like Connecticut. And then for this budget year, 22 to 23, it showed an increase of seven students from the year before, or a 1.1% increase. So I'm just, I'm not following where we get a 15% increase over three, over the past three years and how that's relevant to what the projected increase might be for the coming year. Can you just educate me on that? And I apologize if I'm missing something.
I mean, I mean, folks can take different years that they want to use as a baseline. We've, we've been using the 635 from that 2021 school year because that was the year, you know, the COVID hit and that's, that's the year that I came. So that's the number that we've been using as our baseline for the last several years as we've looked at the growth in enrollment from there. So that's where the, that's, that's why we've been using that baseline. And we've always included preschool in that total. So I'm not disputing, you may be looking at the numbers from a different perspective than we are. But we've been including, we've been including preschool all along. And the budget as designed for next year is designed to support 733 students because we're including those preschoolers in that total.
Okay, fair enough. But that, I understand what you're saying. Okay, in your presentation, I think there was. Okay, um, in your presentation, I think there was, um, a proposal for two teachers, um, two additional teachers in the K through sixth grades, one at Gilead Hill and one at Hebron. Did I understand that correctly?
Yes, so that, yeah.
Looking at the proposed, um, again, the materials that were submitted to the town, the proposed sections based on enrollment for the twenty-three to twenty-four year, um, where you have broken down the projected enrollment for each grade, the proposed sections for each grade, the average class side size, and then the Board of Education suggested class size limits. Um, if I'm reading this chart correctly, the average class size for each grade projection for next year's budget is below the Board of Education's suggested class size limits. If that is correct, can you, can you just educate me on why there would be a need for additional teachers?
Yeah, so each, each, each grade, we want to keep our class, the, the, the Board of Ed policy on class size limits. We want to keep them at those numbers or below. So we're keeping them below with the way that we've designed that, right? Um, I think the questions come up for kindergarten, just like they did last year, they were right on that bubble. You know, if you go over ninety students, you would need to have that six sections. If you're below ninety students, you may not need that sixth section. Um, so we were in that same spot last year where our projection is just right on the line. Um, I think the other, the other grade of concern is fourth grade. So currently, our third graders, there are five sections. And as they're moving up to fourth grade, we're looking to maintain five sections. So we're, we're keeping them at the same class size that they currently are in third grade, which does keep them further below the, the limit established in the policy of twenty-four. You could reduce that section. It's a high priority for the board and the administrative team to maintain five sections for that group of students with the unique makeup of the students in that particular grade. And without getting into specific student information, um, this, the, the students with disabilities within that, within that cohort of students, we feel necessitate having those five sections. Uh, we feel like it's a proactive stance to support the students in the best way we can. Um, and perhaps mitigate other expenses if we went down to four sections.
Okay, thank you. Um, and then just one, uh, final topic, if I may, and it, it goes to the, um, topic on contractual increases. And I think I saw in the slide presentation, and correct me if I'm misunderstanding it, but correct, contractual increases were projected to be three point five percent or something like that.
Yeah.
Looking at the materials that we were provided, um, there's a chart that is entitled Certified Salary by Step and Percentage Increases. And it has, um, steps one through steps thirteen with columns of B A, M A, and six. And then there's an average, um, percentage increase for each of those and then a total percentage average increase, which on this document is for the most, most of the steps are close to seven percent. And I'm just curious as how that compares to the three percent on the slide.
Sure, so overall, you know, we, we have more teachers at top step that are getting that two and a half percent. Um, and if you also look at the non-certified group, you can see that they, um, there's also a, a large bunch there that are at that, um, about three percent. So when everything is balanced out, you know, we do have some staff members that are moving up step, and so those raises are higher. Um, and I'm sure that, um, if you looked at Ram's step schedule, it would be something similar. Um, you know, teachers' salary schedules are pretty typical from one district to the next. But when, when you take all of the, all of the staff altogether, the, the staff that are not moving, you know, from grants into the general fund budget, people who are in general, in the general fund budget and are staying in the general fund budget, it averages out to that, that three point five number. Um, the, the other groups that are not in here are non-certified, are non-affiliated staff members, which there are, are very few, and are, um, currently, we have three administrators in the Administrator of Union, Union. Those raises are all, um, budgeted at three percent.
Okay, um, and then one, one final question on this topic. On the the, the various steps, um, in the materials that were provided to us, it looks like there is a proposed increase for, I'm assuming it's people in the step thirteen group from the sixth column. I'm not sure what that means, but from eleven to thirteen for next year. And then the percentage increase for that step twelve to thirteen range is an eighteen point two percent increase in the proposed budget. What does that represent?
So it represents the, the number of students who are at that, who are, who are at that step. And so we, we have thirteen staff members who are at top, like top step, top paid teachers. Who, and six year represents, um, thirty degrees, be thirty, um, credits beyond their master's degree.
Okay, is that for the proposed vice principals, or is that something?
No, the assistant principals are, are, were just negotiated into the Administrator of Union and are not represented on these charts.
Okay. Great, thank you very much.
Okay, um, okay for me to go, Dan?
Okay, thank you. Um, couple, couple of questions, and I'm not gonna get deep into the, uh, the dollars, just general question, you had, uh, you had talked about, or, or I, I'm sorry, Heather was talking about, uh, some of the preschool numbers. And I believe you said that you, it was actually one F T E lower on, was it an instructional assistant? And you hadn't had a chance to change it?
Yeah, I, it's a typo, so on one.
Oh, no, no, that's fine.
Yeah.
My question is, were there extra dollars in there too?
No, no. No. Dollars are correct, it, it just was a typo.
On the document you gave us to review earlier, um, I don't know if you have it with you on page forty-four. It's called twenty-three dot twenty-four proposed budget summary. You've got, uh, a listing of all the object groupings that comes to a total proposed budget of, I won't read the numbers, but that's your, uh, well, no, absolutely. That's of seventeen point four two percent. And then you have, what I believe is a grant, and it looks like what you've done is you've netted the grant against the seventeen point four two, which takes it down to the four, fourteen point five seven. What is that grant? I- is that a grant? And?
So that, what, the town had asked us to, um, factor into our budget excess cost reimbursement. So that is what that is. Uh, so, so in, in the past, town has always passed along excess cost to the, to, to the school district. And so it was asked that we factor that into the budget, which had not been done previously. Um, we also, we didn't get any excess cost the last two years, so it was kind of moot, but.
Well, I get, I guess the question is for next year. And I know special ed changes every time you blink your eyes, or it can. But, um, did you, you, you said you have four outplacements for next year, I believe. And are those fully funded for the full cost of transportation, tuition? Any special services? Are those fully funded, or are they funded at the amount of this, uh, the three hundred and thirty-nine thousand less?
They, they're they, they're fully funded, and then the excess cost is built in to, to reflect the reimbursement that would come back.
Okay, thank you. Um, and can you explain, I mean, I saw, I, I've been through the numbers. Um, but I was just kind of, uh, confused as, I mean, all the numbers in, in, I think, uh, earlier, Mike, Mike hit, hit on it a little bit, getting into specific numbers. Mine is just the general. Your salary line is going up, uh, one point, one point one, almost one point two million dollars, uh, fourteen point eight three percent. Can you explain that? I mean, that's, uh, looking back at past years, that's quite a substantial increase. And it doesn't sound like your individual groups have increases way out of the ordinary.
No, so I, I mean, the, the chart where you break down the fourteen point five percent, um, most of those items are salary. Um, so that, that's, that's how you're getting to that number. Um, if I, I was gonna jump quickly to it. So the only things that are not salary on there are, um, supplies and required E L A materials for two hundred thousand, facilities and operations, about a hundred thousand. Almost everything else is people.
No, I, and I understand that. Uh, what, what I'm getting at is one point two million dollars for salary and benefits in twenty-three, twenty-four. Uh, if I look back at this past year, I think it was three hundred and sixty or three hundred and seventy thousand for salary and personnel benefits. So I'm, I'm trying to understand where the, the large jump, um, from that three hundred to the one point two. And I know.
I mean, I hear, I hear what you're saying. So the other, the other page that I think is helpful is in our, in our presentation. Um, you know, the cost for new employees, these are like new people working in, in, in the district, is, um, net for six, about four hundred and sixty-two thousand dollars. The rest are moving from grants into the general fund, salary increases. And I just, I didn't mention it when we were on that slide, but I feel like I should. The four hundred and sixty-two is reflective of tuition dollars for preschool, offsetting that figure somewhat.
Okay, understand that, that explains it. Um, and the last question I have is just, I'm just curious, I, I still can't figure out where the numbers, where you're showing a decrease in, in support came from. And before you, you answer that, I, I had just, because I couldn't understand it, I went and I looked at, uh, the, uh, head site, uh, you know, online number, and I took the P P, pure, pure pupil, cost for each of the last, well, I did it back ten years, really more what's relevant is probably the last five. And my numbers, I don't say my numbers, the numbers from the state show very differently. And I mean, I, I can just send you, because I've got the original documents, I can just send those to you. Um, if you'd rather review them without answering, and that's fine.
Yeah, I mean, I think that, I think that there's, um, town dollars and then there's total dollars, right? And so I, I'd be, yeah, please send them along. I, I mean, what we know is that grants definitely have buffered. And if, Donna, can you go to the graphic on the, the next, I think it's the next slide? If you look, if you look here, the yellow line is what we proposed. And you can see, we also proposed spending less local dollars per kid. You know, because we had those grant dollars that helped make up the difference. And, you know, my salary doesn't change based on the number of kids, you know, I become cheaper the more kids are here. So there is some savings, you know, per student, you know, i- i- it's not that you have to spend the exact same amount of money. Um, some caught, you know, the principle is what the principle is, whether you have, you know, two hundred and ninety kids or three, three fifty. Um, yeah, so we've, we've fully acknowledged that you're not necessarily gonna spend the same dollar per kid. But, you know, you, you're, you're seeing sort of the trend line. And then we're sort of response to that is that we don't have those grants to help buffer that, including I D A. We, we double spent I D A last year, knowing we had the, um, non-lapsing account to, to, to fall back on should we need it. Um, and, you know, I just don't know how far we're gonna dig into non-lapsing this year until we know, um, how much the town is getting for excess costs. That, that, I think, will be helpful.
Okay, um, and I, and I, I'll send those documents, uh, to both, uh, you and to, uh, to Heather, so you can take a look at them. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Okay. Anybody else, uh, Peter, please?
You're on me. Thank you, yeah, yeah, thank you, um, Dr. Barrett, I just, just a follow-up, and if it's, if you covered it, I, I apologize. And it was a lot of material. And first of all, thank you for all that you do and, and for the thoughtful presentation. Um, the original intent, from what I recall of preschools before your time, was that the original concept was that, was that it would be budget neutral. And obviously, it's evolved clearly over the years. Um, but did you, do you calculate the net impact of the budget on preschool specifically? So factoring out the tuition and, and, you know, I mean, and sort of what the net cost is to the budget?
Yeah, for, for the additional classroom?
No, no, for the entire program.
It means like taking out tuition from, we do do that, we, um, factoring.
Like, what's the total cost of program? And then what's the impact on the budget, you know, after you get to tuition, Heather? I was just thinking about, you know, sort of the, uh, the impact of dollars in and, and then, and then, and then the budget impact. So I didn't know if that was shared, I missed it, or it probably been discussed in, in other meetings, but if you had that figure, if that makes sense.
Oh, I don't have, I don't know.
I don't know.
But I do, we do factor in, like, we take, we take out, and Tom, or Ms. Schlar is on here too, I believe. Can correct me if I'm wrong, but we do, um, take out what we anticipate to receive in, like, tuition. Um, there's a lot of funding that goes into preschool besides tuition, the board, um, obviously puts in a lot of funding. We have the school readiness grant, and we have eighteen slots there, um, that help, um, low-income families, um, children attend preschool. Um, but you can tell me for a long time, I do, I'm almost positive we take tuition.
Yes, we, we charge positions directly to tuition. Kate, Caitlin, I think, can answer that question, I think, pretty quickly, she's on the call. Caitlin Schlar is our business manager.
Okay, thank you.
Caitlin, do you wanna go off mute and answer that?
Yep, um, okay, so I just pulled that figure up for you, and the total cost, it, um, and this is inclusive of, um, the mandated special ed program that is general funded, um, and the other supports that we're looking to add on, um, it's a three hundred and seventy-nine thousand forty-three dollars.
And, and of course, as Caitlin just mentioned, part of that you would have to spend anyway, is you have to provide a special education preschool program.
So that.
Yeah, no, I, I'm, yeah, I'm a big fan of preschool, I send all five of my kids to preschool. I just, I'm just trying to understand the ta, the impact on the taxpayer. If it was originally intended back years ago to be neutral, and now the tax impact is net of two hundred thousand dollars for the even taxpayers, that's, that's where I was coming from, just trying to understand it, as it's evolved, obviously greatly over the years. Thank you.
Yeah, I, I hear you, and, and like I kind of shared before, the, the complicated factor is that if you were to reduce a section, it actually costs the town more because of, you would have the loss of revenue for that classroom, and that teacher would then bump a less experienced teacher, and so your savings for salary won't offset how much tuition you've lost. Um, that's, that's the, that's the system that's been built over time.
Thank you.
Other questions? Yes, Michael?
Um, if I could just ask a follow-up question to the information that was gi, just given to Peter. Of that three hundred and seventy-nine thousand forty-three dollars, how much of that is the state mandated portion of the program?
Sorry, go ahead.
I was just gonna say that, that, that can be a difficult question. But we'll see what Caitlin can tell us.
It's a hundred and eighty-one thousand dollars.
A hundred and eighty-one thousand is the state mandated portion?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions? I think Dan Larson, I, I think, first off, I would like to know what the actual students, not over three years, but what it is over last year. Cause that's what's telling them how many more students need to be educated. That's where you're potentially getting what you need for additional teachers. Okay, I, Board of Ed, Lindsay?
Yeah, I'm Sam Akman. I love preschool. Look.
He thought you would appreciate that, Dan. It's a circuit board.
Okay.
That's all.
Thank you.
Bright light turns on.
Yeah, we just want to say how much we appreciate the Hebron preschool program. Sam was in it for two years. And if you don't have kids, young kids in the program, and you're not familiar with it. I mean, it is just wonderful. I mean, we looked at all of our options around, including going private. And, you know, these, these teachers, they just care about the students in a way that, you know, it, you feel it in your heart. And, you know, it really set Sam up to, you know, enter kindergarten at a level, you know, beyond his peers that did not go to a program. So we just want to thank the teachers and we want to thank the administration for just the great work that they put into the preschool program. And we really hope that the board supports this preschool initiative. Okay, thank you.
So as I was saying, it's, it would be helpful not over a three-year period, no, but it was, you know, the number of students in a, from last year.
I, I can answer that. I, I can answer that question. And again, Donna can send out the presentation afterwards, but that first bottom-line slide that shows the enrollment figures for fall as they increased over the years, we always have done an apples-to-apples comparison. So we've always looked fall to fall when we've generated these numbers, because we design our budget to support how many students we project in the fall. And so we had six hundred ninety-two, we're projecting seven thirty-three, that's forty-one student increase, which would be a six percent increase in students for next year. The, we have included preschool in these numbers, and I know other people may not support that concept or not. But preschool is included in the budget ask. So that is why we include the preschool total when we're, when we're talking about the percent increase of kids.
Okay, understanding that, you have what's mandatory, K through six, and then whatever is mandatory in preschool. And then you have what is not mandatory, what is nice to have. And I think that's what the Board of Finance is actually looking for, is to get that differentiation. And it's the Board of Finance. And granted, we, the Board of Selectmen, have no input on your budget. But what I'm looking at is our taxpayers are looking at anywhere from a ten to fifteen percent tax hike. A thousand to two thousand dollars, some people are going to be seeing as an increase in their budget this year. And we're going to be losing state reimbursement funds because we are over that six point one percent. So, you know, there's going to be some really hard choices. And to have one agency wanting a fourteen-point, whatever, a one point seven, seven million dollar increase is, is tough, point blank. And I, I don't see the, the overall voters of Hebron accepting that. You know, so that's, that's where I'm coming from. I'm very leery the budget's going to go down and everyone's going to suffer. So it's, you know, this is what I'm looking at. As, you know, a, a resident of the town, I, I can't afford another thousand dollars in taxes. I'm, I'm basically retired. Everything else has gone up, and I really think preschool should cost more for those who want to pay it. You know, we just can't be giving away programs. And I'm not saying it's giving it away, but, you know, all other costs have gone up, those costs should, those expenses to those people that want that service should also go up.
So Dan, if I may, I may think, you know, I hear what you're saying. I do. I think when we look at year to year, I mean, we also have to look at, you know, if we are properly funded for the students we had in previous years. Right? Because if we weren't, then we have to put forward a budget to back fund, right, where we weren't properly funded. And then also the additional students that we have, which, you know, again, I think is a great tribute to our town in all aspects, not just the schools. But if we look at the budget, right, so we, I've looked, we've looked at some data. If we look at the budget from the past twelve years, right? So what, from twelve years ago, right, the town's coming in at eight point four one percent, we're fifteen point five seven. And I, I forgot Ram's exact number, but four percent and change. So if we look at the budget twelve years ago, what the town is asking for this year is thirty percent more than it had twelve years ago. RAM is asking for twenty percent more than it had twelve years ago, and we're asking for nineteen percent oh, from twelve years ago. So I just want to put those figures out there. And I think, like, to say year to year, like, these five kids or these twenty kids and twenty-three in preschool that we have bringing in don't equate. And I think that shows why. If we're not funding our students all the way through, then eventually it's going to catch up to us. And yes, we have some staffing coming in off of grants, but we put them out there to help the taxpayers in the past. But we need to do what's right for our kids and our community. It's our responsibility to do that. So I just wanted to say that.
Yeah, and I'm hoping that you will also watch as we go through these budget proceedings to see exactly where the town's expenses are coming in. You know, it's, it's just not a pretty picture financially.
I understand, and I understand Andy's budget. I mean, you know, the inflation is the real and true thing, right? If, and, and we're looking at a hu- a huge increase in enrollment, you're also looking at an increase in, in people living in town. You know, the inflation is real. You know that, I'm sure, as a business owner, a prior business owner. You know, we have to account for that. It wouldn't be fiscally responsible to put forward a budget that doesn't account for those things and then have a negative budget and have to go to the town for those funds later on. So we need to do the right thing.
Okay. Anyone else? Tiffany? Peter? Okay, it's it's virtually nine o'clock. If none, no one else has any other questions, my question to the both boards. Do we want, we do have public comment. Do we want to do public comment and call it a night? You know, because we're trying to be done for, for, you know, nine thirty. What's your wishes? Tiffany, you're on mute. I'm not sure.
I'm, I'm not, I wasn't talking, but I'll just ask, you know, if we, if we, I'm not unopposed to ending a meeting on time. But I just want to make sure, I know that we have different departments to go over, because I know we did that last year. As long as that doesn't put us behind with the number of meetings we have left, I mean, I'd be fine moving to public comment and everybody else says.
Janet?
I was just hoping Elaine could just quickly explain to us what that state mandate. Yeah. Just, just educate.
Sure, Elaine?
I have to wait for my mic to come up. Sorry. Janet, can you re, re-ask your question, please?
Sure. Um, it's the, the piece from the letter you sent on Wednesday at eleven oh one. It's the second paragraph, regarding the state mandated municipal spending cap inflationary increase of six point one percent. Seven hundred and thirty-eight thousand three oh one would need to be reduced to stay below threshold on the recently acquired special education numbers from Superintendent Bear. I just was wondering, like, is, is that accounted for anywhere here? Or is this additional breakage?
So the municipal spending cap report that has to be filed with OPM, once the budget is adopted, is the total adopted budget amount, which is inclusive of both the town's budget, RAM's budget, and the Board of Education budget. What is permitted to back out of that total budget to remain within the spending cap as allocated or mandated by the state. We can back out capital projects, the town's debt costs, and the special education expense. So seven hundred and thirty-eight thousand dollars is what would need to be cut from the budget right now to stay within the spending caps inflationary increase of six point one percent.
And if we don't meet that number, what is the impact?
We will lose the municipal sharing grant revenue that is in the amount of a hundred and twenty-five thousand, twenty dollars. And the town will incur a fine. And they do not disclose what the fine amount is.
Okay, Mel, I'm sorry, Mel.
Dan, I, I agree with what Tiffany said earlier. I think we should do public comment before we go into the next group, just simply so. If the public's here and they've got something to say, they can say it, and they don't have to hang around. They're certainly welcome to hang around. But I, I think we should, I, I don't think we're going to finish in the next meeting if we have to do what's on the agenda, plus all these other departments. Thank you.
Okay. Any other? Peter? Nope, okay. Well, then, I will open it up for public comment. We'll see what that does for time.
So our first public comment would be from Adam Ackman.
I, I, I don't know if Karen Caputo was, wanted to talk first. I think she was in line ahead of me, maybe.
Adam, I can go after you. I'm more than happy to go after you. It's fine.
Fair enough. All right. So I, I wanted to encourage the board to, the Boards of Finance and Selectmen to accept the education budget as is for a number of reasons. First of all, regarding the macro scale of the budget and where we are with the student population and the inflation. If I look at that at a real high level, if students are going up six percent and inflation was six and a half percent, that gives us high level about a twelve and a half percent increase by itself. Not counting the loss of any grants and additional revenues we might have received in last year. If I look at last year, the budget only got, went up, what was it, one point two percent? And if I looked at the numbers right, we had a two percent increase in students and seven percent inflation, which should have been a nine percent increase in budget. Versus an increase in budget of one point two percent. It really sounds like we got a deal, financially speaking, last year. And we're having to pay for it this year. If you look at the single year over single year change, I believe we're not seeing the full picture here. So I do, I, as a voter, as a, as a parent of a, apparently a future electrical engineer, we I am very supportive of this budget. Switching over to pre-K, if I did my math right on that, it sounds like the elective part of it, not the non-state mandated, mandated part of that, was about, worth about two hundred thousand. If I do my math correctly, that's about sixty dollars per year for your sample medium property in town. Sixty dollars for a year, per year for preschool, if I'm doing my math right. That seems well worth it. The pre-K, pre-K is something we've already established as a town as being worthwhile. It's an asset to the kids personally and financially in the long term. So denying them preschool is going to deny them all those benefits, basically money in the future, uh, resources in the future. Full-time preschool allows our residents with young ones to work. I looked, full-time preschool in the private sector is scarce. It's not available after COVID. It's an asset to our children, to our families, and to the town. And we've already made this decision, but the fact that we have it, we are offering it. And we're doling it out by lottery. We're doling it out by lottery. What does that say about us? We think it's worthwhile to have a program but only for certain people, and we're doling it out by lottery. Would it be acceptable to have a lottery to see which streets in town get plowed? Would it be acceptable in town to have a lottery about which parts of town get fire coverage? So I am all in on, if the, there's demand in town to have another class of preschool, I am all in.
Mr. Ackman, your time is up. Please finish up.
I'm done. Thank you very much.
Okay, next up is Karen Caputo.
Hi, I'm Karen Caputo, sixteen, Forestview Lane. I'm here to, I, I'm in strong opposition of this Hebron budget. And I'm encouraging the Board of Finance to reject this budget and ask the Hebron Board of Education and the Superintendent to go back to the drawing board and try to find a reasonable budget to present to the Board of Finance and the taxpayers. I'm astounded to hear anyone say that this is fiscally responsible. This is fiscally irresponsible. It is not going to increase our houses. It's not going to bring young families to this town. Young families will not be able to afford to live in this town. Okay, I, I, I've been here for over twenty years. I've educated my kids here. And as a still two-income family, and now my kids are young adults, it's getting more and more difficult for me to live in this town and to afford to pay these taxes, let alone retirees. I, I don't know how anyone who's retired could actually afford to live in this town. I, we are not mandated to educate every three- and four-year-old. I don't need the Board of Ed educating me about the benefits of pre-K. Yep, there are, there is benefits, of course there are. But that doesn't mean that every taxpayer has to pay for every child. But that doesn't mean that every taxpayer has to pay for every child in Hebron. There are private preschools. There's daycare. They can, they, parents, if they want to send them to preschool, they can go to the private way. It, it's not my responsibility. And the comparisons that the, the speaker just made about plowing and fire, that's not a comparison. So that's not, it's not about, every district has a lottery. Every district has a waiting list. I know that Mr. Baird, I just, I, I, I'm not sure that everyone's being transparent. Yep, there's some state mandates that aren't covered that we have to, you know, pay for. We have the burden to pay for, but all those pending mandates, they're pending. They have not passed. They may not pass. And if they do pass, typically, we have a year, two years to even prepare for those. So I, I don't even think that should be in the conversation or in the equation. When he talks about, when Mr. Dr. Baird speaks to, if we didn't add a class, how that would maybe reduce a teacher who would then bump a, a teacher that wasn't on the highest pay scale. So it, it, you know, the financial aspect wouldn't benefit us. I, I don't agree with that. I think we really need to look at the numbers. They're looking at adding teachers. So you wouldn't even have to bump a teacher. It just means that you're not adding, you're not adding that teacher to Hebron, or you're not adding that teacher to Gilead. The, I'm not sure why we went from a dean of students to assistant principals, assistant principals, which, um, once they're in the administrator's contract are going to cost more money. There is not a need for a assistant principal to be in a pre-K through two school with a little over three hundred children, where eighty of them are pre-K.
Miss Caputo, your time is up. Please finish up.
Okay, I'd like to see the discipline data. I'd like to see the data that supports these initiatives. Again, I'm urging the Board of Finance to reject this. This is a fiscally irresponsible budget. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up is Terry McManus.
Mr. McManus. You're on mute.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm, I'd like to start out by thanking Heather and Colin. In the past week, they spent a great deal of their time talking about their budgets and their plans with me, and I really appreciate it. Also appreciate the increased clarity that we saw in the preschool budget discussion tonight. I appreciate that, Heather. Mr. Baird said, the system that has been built over time is, is possibly what might be getting us and might get us in the future. And I agree a hundred percent. We added nurses because of COVID. Now we're going to put them on permanently. Something that's built over time. We're bringing in employees that were on grants. And now we're going to bring them on permanently, something built over time. Dan mentioned earlier the effects of these costs on different portions of the community. And this proposal will increase, will decrease my take-home pie. As pie, but take-home pay. Almost a percent and a half. That's a percent reduction in my take-home pay. That's what happens when you retire and you meet increases like this. It's really important that we consider everybody. On preschool itself, a gentleman earlier said, mentioned or emphasized lottery. I'm for preschool. But again, we're building something over time, a little bit two years ago, a little bit now, a little bit tomorrow. And yet we're still on a lottery system. If we are looking at doing universal pre-K at the taxpayers' expense or a portion of the taxpayer's expense, let's make it official. Let's do it right. If we need to increase a parking lot to get preschool, the parking lot's the small thing. Let's not do this sideways. Let's address it. This is what we want. Let's say this is what we want. Make a plan to get it presented to the taxpayers and sell it. It's just, oh, that. I see us working right now, a bunch of earnest people working really hard, bringing things together. And I reminded of that young man that showed his, us his project earlier, a circuit board. He's bringing all these lines together and at the end of the discussion, before he left us, the light came on. And I see that's what we're doing right here, right now. We've got to connect the dots here. You don't want to force residents out. I, when I saw this budget earlier, I took out my spreadsheet and I calculated when I'm going to have to sell my house and move out because my retirement income will not cover the increase in taxes. That's a reality.
Your time is up, Mr. McManus. Please finish up.
One more statement if I could. I, I, I Both of the school districts have said they want to present and give the best education possible. I want to say we want to give the best aid to education possible that the town can afford. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
You're welcome. Thank you, sir.
And next up is Meg Clifton.
Hi, thank you, Meg Clifton. I live at Ten Cottage Lane in Amston, Connecticut. I'm a parent of two kids in the Hebron, one in the Hebron District and one in the Ram District. I've also been teaching at Ram High School for, this is my eighteenth year. So I've been around a while and I've lived in town since two thousand and seven. I'll keep what I want to say relatively short because I know it's late. First of all, thank you to everyone who's here tonight. I know this is a thankless job, particularly this year. So I really appreciate all of the work that the boards are putting in and all of the members who are here today. So the way that I see this, particularly with the Hebron Board of Education budget, is we can either pay these things now or we can pay for them later. Adding the additional teachers, adding the additional paras and expanding the preschool program are all one of those things where we pay now because it saves us money down the line. Teaching at the high school level, I see what happens when kids aren't identified. I see what happens when kids haven't received the services that they should have gotten when they were younger. Teaching at the high school, I see what happens when kids are coming from larger class sizes where there wasn't as much support or there wasn't para support for students that needed it. So while it might seem like a heavy load to burden right now, it's only going to get worse if we don't fund these things. People do move to Hebron for the schools and our enrollment is increasing. So people are still moving to Hebron because of the school systems, because of the support that they get, because of our commitment to educating our special education students. That's a huge benefit. Speaking to the behavior issues, I know that Dr. Baird mentioned, at the high school level, I can tell you that there's been a noticeable increase in behavior issues, you know, due to COVID, due to mental health issues, due to just kind of the state of the world that weighs heavily on our kids. Um, you need the extra support both from administration, from paras and from teachers. So it's not an extra. It's not something that's a want. I view that something as a need. And we really do need to do right by our children in this town and in this community. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Anyone else? Anybody else, Donna?
Well, there were some comments in the chat earlier during the Board of Ed's presentation. I'm not sure if any of these people wish to speak, but Tim Wilson, his comment was, your budget is too high, pre-K is not mandated. Heather Summerer, during the presentation, she said, agreed, shocking growth. I support pre-K. We need to remain competitive. And then Keith Pettit. Nine of the past twelve years, the school, the school budget increase has been less than one percent. The town has been, the town has come in under one percent a single year, fiscal year thirteen. And I believe, well, Heather, Heather does wish to comment. So Heather, go ahead.
Hi, um, I apologize. My comment came in oddly. Not understanding how go-to meeting worked. I do support preschool education in the town. I, my, my children are much older. I have one that has graduated out of the school system. And I have another child who's in high school right now. And we went through the lottery system. It was stressful. It was really concerning. My child at the time was a December baby. So when she went to school at five years old, she turned six years old in December of, of the school, of the kindergarten school year. So she's always on the older end of things. She was ready. You know, I think a lot of kids are ready. There's so much more for them that they're exposed to. They're ready to learn more at an earlier age. And we need to be prepared as a community to support them. And I think preschool is part of that. It's not, you know, just a freebie. I think we need to have our kids prepared and ready to move forward in the school system. And I think preschool is part of that. And I would like to see our community support that. That's it.
Thank you. Anyone else out there?
And then just one more comment in the chat. This is from Karen Caputo. She says, I too work in education. There are minimal discipline and school climate issues, pre-K through two. And that is it.
Okay. That would end our public comment section. As I say, right now I'm looking at, it is roughly nine twenty-two. Andy?
It's up to the board. It's up to the board.
I think for eight minutes, I don't know if we're going to get anything really accomplished. I'll put it that way. We do still have a lot of the miscellaneous general government. Our next meeting, next Tuesday, the twenty-first, is Department Presentations and Miscellaneous Government. And then that's actually our last meeting. So you tell me, at, at some point, there's still a lot of area to get over.
Yeah, there's not, there's a lot of my budget that doesn't have hardly any change from the previous year. The, the drivers are the drivers. And the biggest one is, is going to be positions. So we, we're very fortunate to have a building official that was also our fire marshal for many years. So he's going to retire. So now I have to hire a full-time building official and then a part-time fire marshal, along with an assistant fire marshal we already have in the budget. Same thing with the Public Works Director. He's going to retire. He was the Public Works Director, but he also was a WPA, WPCA Administrator to Water Pollution and Control Authority. So we're going to have to split that up. I don't know. There's a couple other drivers. The social worker, you'll see a huge increase, you know, in that salary. We went one year without getting anybody to, that we could hire for that. So we had to, we had to up the salary quite a bit to make it competitive, along with adjusting the senior director's salary to be more in line with the salary survey. So there, throughout the budget, there's, we can clearly point out what the drivers are, the increases are over last year's budget. And then if there's any specific questions from the board members, please get them to us and we'll be ready to answer those. But I think the preview, when you go through the departments, the drivers of the fire department, the resource officer and the increase to the police accreditation and then the extra, you know, the extra shift. So we'll, we'll be able to explain it pretty clearly what's driving our budget.
Okay. And on the fire department, right, okay, Elaine, the twenty-eighth, it's saying it's the public hearing, revenues over, excuse me, overview and discussion of the bu- budget deliberations and then finalizing. So that's what's happening on the twenty-eighth. I think it's important. Is the fire department coming before us next week then? Andy?
Next week, we have the, the fire department, the Parks and Recreation and the Police Department.
Okay, because the fire department, that's a big one. You know, they're literally down to roughly forty-four members. And they're going to be looking for big numbers in hiring on, whether it's per diems or other support staff. Basically, we're going to, what I'm looking at is we're almost getting to a, a quasi-paid fire and EMS service. And that's some huge dollars there. Because people just aren't volunteering. They're not getting the members. And we have a public, we have a town that we still have to protect. You know, and that's all the people, young, old and everybody in between and everybody that goes through town. So this is, this is, again, being point blank, these are what the budget drivers are. So when people say, oh, your budget's going up X, Y, Z. Well, I don't know if you want, really want to have, not have a fire department. You know, when your loved one falls down a flight of stairs and breaks a leg and nobody shows up. Or if your house catches fire and, you know, you end up having to wait for a surrounding town to come. It's again, this is a perfect storm. And I just, I, I'm hoping all of the different boards and commissions understand what's going on. Okay. It is literally what, nine twenty-eight? So.
Twenty-six.
I have nine twenty-six, but I'll go with nine twenty-eight if you want.
Is there anything else that we could cover quickly, Andy, or am I just pushing that envelope too close?
I mean, it's up, it's up to your board. You guys are in charge. I think we can cover it at another time. It's up, but if you guys want to stay on, that's fine. I'm not sure Elaine and Donna want to stay on much longer. It's been a long day, but we, we'll make sure it gets covered. We're not looking to dodge anybody or any questions.
Okay, I'm looking for input.
The budget is my, and not, not insinuating. Yeah, I'm not looking for any other budget. I think mine's pretty, pretty, pretty open to what the drivers are, but we can explain everything.
Dan, now.
Dan, I'll.
Earlier statement.
Yes, yes, Mel.
I'm sorry. I'll, I'll retract my earlier statement, although I, I think we need to get into it. I got to respect the, the length of the day for the town staff.
Okay.
Wrap it up and we'll pick it up next week.
Mike?
Yeah, I was going to say I'm in favor of covering it next week. I think we can get through it. I believe tonight we had a lot of stuff to get through and a lot of public comment. But we may get through a lot more next week, but I will ask my other board members if they think differently. Janet, Dave?
Well, I, I, I guess. Go ahead, whoever started.
Ms. Janet, I agree. We, we can shut down for tonight.
Okay. My problem is, of course, I'll, I'll, I'll go into one o'clock in the morning. So I need people to say, okay, it's time for you to shut up. Sit down.
Okay, okay, Mr. Chairman.
That's what we just said, Dan.
I make a motion to adjourn. How about that? I just made a motion.
Okay.
Board of Finance?
Everybody's in favor.
Finance.
All right, the Board of Finance is adjourned as well.
Thank you all. Have a, have a safe night and hopefully.
Have a good day.
You wake up to not too much white stuff.
Yeah, thank you, everyone. Good night.